Fledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you recall?
Certainly.
Baxter?
She's not around. No. She doesn't stand there.
Okay, thank you. Bishop is absent. Day is absent. Goodyear?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Here.
Yes.
Wales?
Here.
Yells?
Here.
I'm to approval of regular agenda, seeking approval of last month's agenda, June 30, 2021.
So, just clarification approval of last month's.
Oh, yes. And we got the agenda, our, uh, for the agenda for tonight's meeting.
Seeking approval of tonight's.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Motion, second, to approve the agenda as presented, on paper, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Here it is.
Again, seeking approval of minutes from the last month's meeting, June 30, 2021.
Make that motion, second.
Motion, second, to approve the minutes from June 3 regular meeting, as presented, on paper, say yes?
Yes.
Any opposed? Here it is.
Number four, uh, the site plan reviews, we have Northern Michigan Engineering here tonight for the body of distress.
Ma'am, if you'd like me to take over.
Yes.
City, this is a site plan, uh, review by the planning commission for Northern Michigan Engineering Holiday Inn Express located at seven two zero North Cedar Street. Follow, uh, as the applicants, if they're present, identify themselves. Are you there?
David Drews, Northern Michigan, ma'am.
I'm loaded. Seven twenty North Cedar.
Okay, very good. And what we'll do now is give you a moment to make a brief presentation, a couple minutes is good, to the planning commission about the proposed project. And then I'll take over from there into the narrative about the manager's conditional letter that I explained during the administrative review. Okay, so go ahead.
Thank you.
Uh, the, you know, the planning commission, you've had a chance to review the plans. And basically, it's a great, uh, demolition of the existing, uh, building, uh, fully cleaning off the site and starting new construction. The, uh, site's very simple, there's not a lot of topography, and, uh, it's flat, so, um, the existing site doesn't have existing stormwater management facilities there. So, um, part of the site plan that we created were managing stormwater. And, uh, so that was part of the review for the, uh, the engineer that did the review. The sixty-five, it's a sixty-five, uh, unit, uh, Holiday Inn Express, three-story building. And, uh, so we have the, the parking for the building. Um, the, the one thing on the, and, uh, Mr. Yoers will address that, I believe, in the, uh, checklist, the signage. Uh, there's gonna be signage on Holiday Inn Express, we don't know about any additional signage that may be needed. Typically, you would have directional signs, you know, things like that, and maybe a monument sign, we don't know what that's gonna be. The, uh, because it's an existing motel on the site, there's an existing water and sewer lead, we plan to reuse those. The only, uh, thing, when we get to the construction phase, we would want to excavate, locate them. Uh, we were informed as the fees, if we need to make new connections, that's a possibility, there's additional fees, so we're gonna attempt to reuse the existing connections that are there. It's gonna be more.
Let me interrupt, please.
Yeah.
My understanding during the administrative review is that you're going to be making a new tap into an existing manhole. Is that still current?
Uh, we, we wanted to look at that, both, uh, you know, if there could be associated with coming into the manhole. And if, uh, really, the, if the grades allow for time to that existing lead, and it would be more economical to the developer to do that. You don't always know that, because until you get the elevation of that lead pipe and the condition of it, it's a fair, you know, the, the existing sanitary lead is at the northern end of the site. And, uh, the mechanical room is on the southern end, so we've got a fair distance to go there. Until you excavate that lead and know, uh, mathematically, will it work? Uh, the good news is, is if that, it becomes a problem, there is a sanitary manhole right directly adjacent to the mechanical area. And so that would be a, a secondary choice, I would say. Uh, you know, it's, right now, it's a matter of, uh, what's the most economical for the developer? But there becomes a point where, uh, you know, mathematically, you can't do it. And so we won't know that until we excavate, uh, and typically, we always include on our notes for the contractor. The first step would be to excavate that lead, determine the elevation, we would go back and look at the building elevations, this plumbing coming out. Do the math, make sure that we can use it, because sometimes it, it may not be deep enough. I don't think that's a problem, but, um, you know, you never know until you excavate.
Okay, I, I understand that. The manager's conditional approval letter that we circulated reflected that you were going to be tapping the existing manhole. So, on the fly, I'll edit that accordingly. Okay, so, are there any other things that have changed since I circulated that letter?
We also talked about the water, uh, we're gonna, you know, because of the water tap, uh, there, there was the discussion of the, uh, the fire suppression.
Correct.
Uh, and we know that's a separate tap. And, uh, there'll be a new tap for that, and there was a discussion on the fees, that it's a different fee structure than a new tap. And again, the location water, because it's under pressure, it doesn't really care what the elevation of the tap is. So, there should be no reason other than, uh, our concern is the depth of the water lead. And if you have to go under a long stretch of parking lot, that you could potentially freeze that line. So, I think our choice on the water is to use that existing lead. Unless there's something that says in the findings, doing our due diligence during construction, that we needed to make that new tap, then we would, but I, I don't see that as being a problem.
That was our understanding, was that you would use the existing too much water service.
Yes, yes.
So, I'm going to edit the, um, point four, that you'll be, your intent is to utilize the existing sanitary sewer service connection. And once again, I'll echo what the fee would be if you decide to tap the manhole.
Yes.
Okay, are there any other changes to make?
No other changes.
Yeah.
If you have any, anyone has any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
Do you want to briefly go over the, uh, site plan, uh, drawing, your, your sketch, so that the commission and the audience can know where the, the building position and the property is still?
Yeah, the, uh, the positioning, the building of the current site is, uh, the current building on the site is oriented toward the entrances to the motel on the south side of the building. And the buildings to the north side of the site, this actually is opposite, where the building is shifted to the south property line. And the entry to the, the units is to the north side. There's a covered canopy, uh, for dropping off, uh, guests that were drop-off, and, uh, support for share. It's, it's, uh, it's a detached covered area, but it, it's integral to the building and the design. If you've seen most of these, uh, typical hotel motel, uh, is critical to that. Our landscaping, uh, we included, uh, everybody along the north and south lines. It's a fast-growing, a very, uh, creates a privacy buffer, um, around the perimeter. And, uh, we do have some areas to add landscaping along the north side of the building. Still, the riding desks, it's, it's, I'm gonna have a good look there, there's some landscape areas that are available. There's, uh, the ADA compliant parking will be, um, to the north side of the building, very near the entrance to the building. Uh, we are doing, uh, we're gonna have to modify the entrance, uh, drive, coming off of, uh, the highway. And basically, there's an existing entrance there, but it doesn't work with the site. So, we'll be removing curving and putting in new curving that meets the city, uh, the village requirements. And, uh, just basically shifting the entrance to match what the site plan shows. So, and we will be, uh, what the plan calls doors, the entire property width will replace the sidewalk. Uh, and then the sidewalk where it crosses the entrance drive, it'll be, uh, typically, it'll be the ADA compliant, it'll drop down to the grade, so there won't be a, a step or anything. So, there's a typical detail for that. So, we'll, and then there will be a, uh, besides the, uh, a sidewalk, off of the, the village sidewalk going to the front door, there is a side door to the motel. Typically, that's not the main entrance, that's really more of an emergency entrance, uh, or exit for the building, more so than anything. Uh, so, we're gonna, uh, have two ties off of that existing sidewalk, but the entire sidewalk will be replaced.
And you do acknowledge that you provided the Village of Calcasas standard specifications for the structures that the sidewalks grab.
Yes, and, uh, the, uh, the, your engineer provided some details, and I've included them on the plan. And so, if there's any additional details as to sidewalk, uh, details, we'll include those. And, uh, before we, these plans right now, they're labeled preliminary for construction. So typically, any input from, uh, your group, uh, any other requirements, BPW, if there's fine tuning, I would say we're at the point of fine tuning the plans. So that when we go to construction, they will use these documents, and that's what they're gonna construct. Uh, so we have notes on there at work. We want the, whoever the contractor ultimately is, they need to contact, uh, BPW, notify them in advance, work with them, to comply with all the requirements, any requirements that the village has, construction requirements and notifications. So, uh, that's pretty typical, but it's important.
And if you follow the Village of Calcasas standards specs, you should be okay. And I believe our engineer provided those.
Yeah, and I've included them on the.
Okay. Let's revisit the, uh, water tap for fire suppression. And there were two questions that I had, that we were circulating today by email, but I hope to have answered by tonight, if I should do that now. And the first would be fire suppression, and having it reflected on the drawings, uh, the, the drawings show both a two-inch and a separate four-inch. So the two-inch would be the new water connection.
Yes.
Correct. And the four-inch would be the.
For the fire suppression.
Yes, very good.
Independent, uh, separately, two independent.
And we explained to Elon, to the applicant, through you, that that would be a separate fee for fire suppressions. We did discuss that. And then, not to steal your thunder, but the pool, uh, we noted that the first print showed incorrect, uh, surface area for the pool. But, uh, this print doesn't show that, so.
So, the architectural plan, we, and I resubmitted the, uh, the sub. I don't know that I included the architect's, he was, he had an updated plan, and maybe it was my failure to include that plan. He changed the numbers on the pool, yeah, on the pool plan.
To reflect the.
We, he did make the change as we, you know, up, updated the plan, I think, my failure to.
So the applicant knows, if the planning commission approves its, uh, application tonight, that will be a condition of having the actual permit, at least to you, the actual zoning permit, to have those details.
Yes.
I'll read those in a moment, though. Go ahead.
Uh, so that, uh, we, we talked about the, uh, the landscaping, uh, we have required parking, uh, sidewalk connection, new sidewalk. The, uh, stormwater system is all, uh, to spend a little moment on that, there is nothing there now, right now, and so if you have a large storm event, uh, basically, the water just goes where it wants, ends up in the M dot right away. Uh, we typically, uh, M dot, you're not allowed to connect, there may be, there is a stormwater system there, but that's for M dot, that's not for, like, five properties. So, this is a significant improvement for the site in that we have, uh, subsurface retention areas and infiltration. So, we have, uh, our, uh, stormwater structures are interconnected, they're going to handle, uh, the stormwater on the site. Basically, it's, uh, piping chambers that store water and let it infiltrate into the ground. So, it's good for the groundwater table, and it's good because it's not gonna go to the adjoining properties. The site grading is such that it's gonna hold the water on the site, it's not gonna go to the neighbors, it's not gonna go to M dot. I, you can't ever say ever, because you could have a two-hundred-year, a five-hundred-year event, and eventually, everybody's full, but, um, you know, this, this site plan is a significant improvement to what's there for managing stormwater. The, uh, other than that, I think the, uh, during construction, it's, uh, just important to coordinate with, uh, the city, notifying them of, uh, what our schedule would, will be. We will, uh, this is, uh, as far as the M dot permit, it's, it falls under, it's really not a new entrance, it's a, it's a, um, I will call it an improvement on the existing entrance. So I've seen in the past that, uh, they treat it, I'll say somewhat casually, we'll contact them, and that, and there's a requirement, the contractor needs to comply with all of M dot requirements for signage, safety and things. But really, we're, we're just relocating the, the existing entrance, the existing, we're not creating a new curb cut, we're just relocating the. Other than that, I, uh, welcome any questions.
Turn it over, commissioners, first, for questions. And if you have a question, uh, we'd see if there are any questions in the audience.
Is anyone from the audience, any questions?
I, I, I just got one. Are you gonna put outside parking lighting, kind of north end?
Yes, uh, thank you for reminding me, uh, there is parking lot lighting on a site like this, typically, there's perimeter lighting, and we showed on the site plan. And it's, uh, um, cutoff lighting to protect it, so it's not going on the adjoining properties, but for safety and for the, uh, for the safety of the paper rooms, they have the same. Yeah, it's done, it's all cut off, so there's not a direct from adjoining properties. There typically is, and, uh, the architect, uh, at the time, you know, their final architectural plan, they're gonna have lighting on the building too. But that's typically, that meets the same requirement, uh, there may be bolish, we didn't have any of that detail, but really important thing that we have, uh, we do have perimeter lighting, uh, in the parking areas.
Uh, do you, the building goes on the south side of property, right? When you, you have to turn it off, per, opposite of the highway. How far back on the property? Please put it on the set.
The, the what, the lighting, or the?
Building.
Oh, the building?
Yeah.
There's the sidewalk here, that's the highway.
Yeah.
And this is the back end, right?
Just wanna, oh. Never know about whether it's a preferable to smoke.
Yes. Yeah, we, uh, the, the site, uh, because we're, basically, we're developing the whole site, there will be some areas for temporary snow storage. But because the, the applicant, uh, they have property across the road, so like, in many areas where you, where you don't have sufficient snow storage on site, they'll have to, you know, regularly, when you get a storm event, they're gonna have to pick it up, remove it, take it off-site. So, for the, uh, during the storm event, typically, they'll plow it up, put it in piles, but then they'll have to get somebody to come in, contract with them, get it off.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Yeah, I'd like to just see what you're doing on your east border there.
Yes.
I'm just having east border. So one thing I had, uh, a question, uh, that doesn't seem to have an issue here, the survey states that are in here, they conflict with the current survey that I have on that property. So it kind of cuts the way it goes at an angle.
Okay.
I'm not sure I understand that.
We, uh, we were provided with a, uh, specific survey, uh, by Godwin Jubak. We do boundary surveys ourselves, but, uh, we were provided with an existing certificate, so we retrace that from the, and, you know, all of our work is tied into the, the previous survey. But, you know, I'd be glad to look at that with you, it, really, what it's a matter of is getting a copy of your survey and figuring out where, if there is a discrepancy, what is, and then, so we can talk about it.
Yeah, let's give you that.
I, I have a copy.
Yeah, I'll give you a card, and we'll be glad to look at that.
Any other questions?
So I'll have, ma'am, we can wait on, um, hopefully, on the agenda consideration.
Under the side, we have, uh, permission. Number six, current business, A is consider action on site plan submitted by Northern Michigan Engineering.
Okay, here we are already. Okay, planning commissioners, you know how we, um, go through this, I'll read to you the additional approval letter, and I'll read the text, I know it's tedious, but I'll read the entire text. And on the fly, I have made a couple of changes, uh, having learned that, uh, the applicant's intent to utilize the existing sanitary sewer service and so on. So that's worth reflecting, and also, I'm going to, on the fly, add an additional requirement that the applicant contacts the adjacent property owner in the east to resolve any survey conflicts. That's a civil issue, that's out of the village's control, but I'll include that at the courtesy of property owner, adjacent, is that adequate? Good, yeah. So, what we'll do, I will, uh, read the conditional approval letter, and then I'm going to put it in form of a motion, and we'll see how it fares from there. Calcasas manager's office has conducted an administrative review following the site plan review checklist of the site plan application and supplemental materials submitted for the proposed seven-two-zero North Cedar Holiday Inn Express, Calcasas, Michigan, seven-two-zero North Cedar Street. Uh, this administrative reveal, review revealed the following matters which need to be included as conditions of any anticipated site plan approval. And that means any anticipated site plan approval by this body tonight, because the, uh, site plan is not yet approved until you act on it. And specifically, those conditions are, and clerk, I'll give you a copy of this, of course. On the number one, drawings will be submitted to the village office board, signature and released by the zoning administrator, and the site plan zoning permit will show, number one, A, corrected pool area five hundred forty square feet. Number one, B, fire hydrant detail in accordance with Village of Calcasas standard specifications, and for the audience's benefit, the standard specs are specs developed by our village engineer record to regulate installation of infrastructure such as fire hydrants, water beans, sidewalks, and so on. Bring it uniformated. Item one, C, stormwater handling calculations requesting the Village of Calcasas standard three-inch per hour infiltration rate, with subsequent review and approval by the village engineer. I will note that that has been done already, Mr. Drews mentioned that a moment ago, and that, although I read it into the record, has already been handled and approved. Number two, REU value of twenty-seven point five was calculated for the facility and communicated to the applicant. Number three, the applicant stated intent is to utilize an existing too much water service in the property. Water availability fee of twenty-two thousand six hundred and sixteen dollars was calculated for the facility and communicated to the applicant in the event the existing water service is determined to be unusable. And the applicant elects to install a new water service. The applicant acknowledges that in the event that is ready to install a new water service, it would necessitate a separate application and that cost to the applicant. And these items are being read into the record to make them clear publicly to not only the board and the public, but the applicant as well, these different conditions. It prevents, uh, confusion down the road. Item number four, applicant stated intent is to utilize an existing sanitary sewer service connection. Applicable sewer availability fee of eighteen thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and fifty cents was calculated for the facility and communicated to the applicant if a new sewer tap must be made. Number five, if the applicant installs a new sewer service, it necessitates a separate application and costs that the applicant has outlined in number four above. Number six, applicant must submit plans showing fire suppression water connection to the Village of Calcasas Department. Side note, we heard that discussion between Mr. Drews and myself a few moments ago. Back to the letter, it's separate associated quarterly fee based on the surface size, as discussed during the administrative review meeting, and specified in the Village of Calcasas fee schedule, that will be in effect at the time of connection. Again, an item that we include in this text for, to prevent future confusion. Item number seven, various completed water and sewer applications, if they, uh, have to be made, and their corresponding fully paid fees must be submitted by the applicant, or municipal utilities will be activated. Number eight, the applicant acknowledges that they will provide at the Calcasas Village Public Works Department, has built drawings showing location of water and sewer utilities that they install on the property. Number nine, facility signage and driveway permits anticipated by the applicant, necessitate separate review and permitting by the village, and Mr. Drew mentioned that, that, that they would be, of course, returning to the, uh, village for signage, that'll be handled separately. Number ten, applicant acknowledges that any alteration of the plans or expansion of structures described on, at the June tenth administrative review, uh, will require additional site plan review by the manager's office. So, what we're working from tonight, and, and the planning commission will be reviewing and approving, this is stating the obvious, is our mutual understanding of what those plans are, and if they change to any significant degree, we'll be, we'll, just, probably, in this, this, another planning commission meeting. So, we acknowledge that, of course. Okay, moving on. Number eleven, and the applicant agrees to abide by all Village of Calcasas ordinances with specific attention to the following, as applicable. If there are any licenses that they need to obtain from that village, the state or the federal government, they will do so. Uh, additionally, any artificial lighting must be shielded from rent, glare, and trespass, and must not be visible from neighboring properties, adjacent streets or public rightways. And further, that, uh, is spelled out in more detail in our ordinance with a summary being, outdoor lighting fixtures shall be rated at a color temperature of four thousand degrees Kelvin or less, until I have one hundred percent cutoff above the horizontal plane of the lowest part of the light source. In other words, they shut them down. That is, lights may not be emitted, light rays may not be emitted by the luminaries at angles above the horizontal plane per the Village of Calcasas ordinance, it's in our ordinance. Item C, uh, lighting and associated equipment, such as not limited to lamps, lights, ballasts, and so on, I won't, uh, read all of this, most. and so on, I won't read all of this, must comply with FCC rules and regulations as a condition of licensure. Item D, all activities shall be conducted so as not to create or permit trespass or spillage of dust, glare, sounds, noise, vibration, fuel, motors, or light on neighboring properties and adjacent streets or public rightways. Bear with me, we're almost at the end. Additionally, the applicant will contact the adjacent property owner regarding surveys, the adjacent property owner, if they need to, to do that. And moving on, based on the earlier administrative review, and with inclusion of the above listed conditions, the manager's office finds the application submitted will meet the criteria for site plan approval, as specified in Village of Calcasas zoning ordinance one five two decimal one zero eight, there are reports of recommendation of the manager's office at the Village of Calcasas, planning commission, that's you, grant site plan approval of the proposed seven-two-zero North Cedar Street Holiday Inn Express, Calcasas, Michigan, with inclusion of the above listed conditions, and as described in the plans and supplemental materials submitted by the applicant, I'll put that in form of a motion.
I will second that motion.
If there's no further discussion, I will take a vote, I'll vote on the approval of the site plan, conditional power. Bishop is absent, Dave is absent, Goodger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ramsey?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Wales?
Yes.
Yost?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion period.
And, of course, I'll provide you the edited version of that, so, conditional approval letter.
Thank you.
Is the changes that we made tonight on the fly. Yeah? So, I'll help for that, I...
Moving on to current business C, begin review of amendments to Village, Village zoning ordinance.
I would make a motion to take a vote on the current business C, I'm assuming that legally, uh, those things. You need a second.
Who was the second, sorry? Kelly?
Motion to second to table the review of certain order amendments, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pay opposed?
So, moving on to current business C, expenditure report, so I'm seeking approval of expenditure report in the, in May thirty-first, two thousand thirty-one. Motion to second to approve the expenditure report as presented, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Pay opposed? Next item on the agenda is public comment, is there any person in the audience that would like to make a comment?
I have one, one comment, I just would compliment all of you, I was having a pleasure working with you, and I worked with many municipalities, and just, I would say, this is a well-oiled machine that works with people, and not against them, and I appreciate it. I certainly try to do it, as we say, government at the speed of business.
I echo that. And I think the president, welcome to Calcasas again. Still, I'm not sure how to word it. Glad to have you here. Starting to see the changes.
Any other comments? Otherwise, we will move to adjournment meeting at six thirty-two. Thank you for all coming.